Thirty to my bride. And then I text her and said, it may be a long. When I looked at all that, I'm thinking. We got, we got public comment too. Looks like we got several public comment. Yeah, I've seen, yeah, I've seen, uh, Fremont people. It looked like they're saying. Yep.
You ready, Lacy? Okay, we call the city council meeting for Monday, July 28th. Order start with the roll call, please.
Atkins.
Yeah.
Evans.
Here.
Mitchell, Mizell, Mutchler.
Here.
Wall.
Here.
Jordan.
Here.
Garner.
Here.
Mayor Carr.
Here. So do have quorum. Well, we're gonna start off with our invocation given by Barb McKenzie, emergency services chaplain, followed by our pledge of allegiance. Would you please stand?
Gracious God, we invite you through your holy spirit to be a part of this meeting. We pray that your spirit will guide the discussions and your wisdom will lead the decisions that need to be made for the work of this council, for it to be fruitful. Bless the leaders of this community, Lord, and the work that they do. I pray in the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go ahead, Don. I understand Don Anderson wanted to say something real, really quick.
Mayor and council, I know that we're getting ready to pay remembrance to a very special lady in our community, Miss Patty Burns, and that's well deserved. She is such an awesome person, great friend of mine. I have the opportunity and the privilege to speak and preach her funeral tomorrow, so looking forward to celebrating her life. But there, I wanted to just take a minute. Barb McKenzie, who does the invocation for me time to time when I can't be here. Barb, I just want to give you a real quick shout out about her. She's getting ready to leave our community. She's been here for several years. And, you know, every community has those unsung heroes where you see them and you don't know all that they do and how much they, they really contribute. Barb is one of those people. For so, several years, what, probably at least 10, 12, 15 years you've been a chaplain? For 14 or 15 years. Right after we started, she became part of our chaplain program. Barb has been called out numerous times, usually by me. A lot of times if there's a female that, that is having some, needing to talk to someone, Barb is my go-to. And I, she's been called out all times of the day, weekends, and she has served the community in ways that nobody ever sees, in times of crisis, in times of need. She's also been a minister in this community and some of the surrounding communities in our, our area, and has served those congregations very faithfully. So tonight, I just want to, life has changed as it does for all of us, and her husband passed away and went home to be with the Lord last year and three years ago. It's been that long.
Yeah.
And Barb is moving to Ohio to be with her sisters and be closer to family. So I just wanted to take a moment and just let you know, we're losing another good one too, but this time it's a good thing. She's gonna be closer to family. But we just appreciate you, Barb, for what you've done in the community for all these years and how you've served, and I'm gonna have a hard time finding somebody to replace you. You've got such a sweet spirit, so thank you for all that you've done. So, thank you.
Thank you, Barb. And as Don alluded to, I want to take a moment and, and honor the life of Patty Burns. And I'm gonna read the proclamation, then I think they may can have a moment of silence for her, if that's all right. Whereas Patty Burns dedicated her life to serving the people of Lebanon and Lakewood County through decades of work in local journalism and volunteer service. And whereas she was a steady and familiar presence at city council meetings, civic events, and community gatherings, ensuring the public stayed informed and engaged with local government. And whereas Patty poured her heart into uplifting local youth, supporting organizations such as 4H and FFA, and giving her time to groups including the Lakewood Literacy Council, Lebanon Area Foundation, Downtown Lebanon, and the Lebanon Chamber of Commerce. And whereas she was a passionate advocate for Lebanon's first responders, particularly the Lebanon Police and Fire Departments, volunteering her time to help organize law enforcement appreciation events and efforts like Back the Blue, always working to ensure officers felt seen, supported, and valued. And whereas Patty Burns was not only a voice for the community, but also a servant-hearted leader, a friend to many, and a constant force for good, whose impact will be felt for many years to come, now therefore I, Jared Carr, Mayor of the City of Lebanon, Missouri, do hereby proclaim June 29th, uh, sorry, July 29th, 2025, as a day of gratitude honoring the life of Patty Burns, and encourage the people of Lebanon to reflect on her legacy of service and compassion, and to carry forward the spirit of community she so deeply embodied. In witness whereof, I have heretofore set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Lebanon to be affixed this 28th day of July, 2025. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. And Patty will be missed. I, I remember, and I just want to tell on her a little bit, first story. So when I became mayor and back in September of 17, whatever, I've been in the Monday night, I guess, and that Tuesday morning she came in and she had a CD recording of it and handed it to me and said, Jared, here's your, and I still have it in my desk in my, in city hall, here's your, here's your, uh, recording of your first meeting as, as mayor. And, uh, just, you know, she touched everybody's lives all the time like that, and, and that was just something special that I remembered and wanted to share with, with everyone as well. So she certainly will be missed and, and was a great part of this community and, um, always, always look forward to talking to her, so. Okay, we'll move on to, um, public comments now, and we have a sign in here of Jean Stuck, Stuckmeyer, is that, is that correct? Glenn, sorry.
Sorry for my scribbling.
Sorry for my poor, poor writing. If you, don't mind, come on, or? Or, or you, uh, do you want to talk, do you want to talk in the public hearing regarding, that says regarding 634 Fremont?
Yeah, that's really what the, um, I live at 538 Fremont Road, so I just, uh, very curious about the happenings there, so.
Okay, well, uh, if you want to wait till the public hearing proportion of it, well, I'll certainly call on you then, if that's all right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Glenn. All right, then, now I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Jordan moved, Atkins seconded. Roll call, please.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Okay, consent agenda is approved. Now entertain a motion to enter into public hearing regarding the final plat, lots 21, 22, 23, block 17 of the first railroad addition, final plat Lebanon Eagle Stop plat number two, final plat Lebanon Ready Mix subdivision, and the rezoning of 634 Fremont Road, RS1 to RS2.
So moved.
Evans moved, and Mutchler seconded. Roll call, please.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Okay, we're now in public hearing. Christina?
Okay, on this, on the. The final plat of the replats of block 21, 22, and 23, and block 17, as she said. This is, um, a request to replat those lots. As one lot. And it's a downtown business district. The property, in order to do any new constructions, we must plat, and that's what we're doing. Request to do two lots to one lot. Those structures have all been demolished on that. And so tonight, that's what we're asking or requesting.
Okay. Any questions, council? Any comments around the public regarding that? So we are in public hearing. Okay, move on to the next one, please.
I'd like to introduce, um, Mark Scott.
Yeah.
He's a planning and zoning manager for us, code administration, and he's gonna do Eagle Stop. He's more familiar with it than I am, so I'm gonna let him introduce that.
Absolutely. Thank you. Welcome, Mark.
Thank you. Uh, we're here this evening to request a plat of Lebanon Eagle Stop number two located at 1840 West Elm Street. Um, the plat has been submitted, and there was an amendment to, uh, vacate a overhead utility easement, which was accomplished. And the plat you see before you now is the revised plat or the amended plat. And, uh, we're seeking your approval.
Okay.
Where's that at, Mark?
Uh, that's just north of what you would consider, uh, privately valued tire. So there's the new Eagle Stop restaurant, uh, or the.
Right next to your food truck.
Oh.
Your favorite place to eat is, yeah. Yeah.
Nice to know.
And that was taken from two to one, correct? Is that right?
Pardon?
Two what, two lots to one lot? Is that correct on the?
There's just a plat of a single lot.
Just the plat.
That was the only parcel that had not been properly platted.
Okay, okay.
Entire strip is platted now.
Okay. Any questions from the public regarding that? Okay, we'll move on to the next one there. Final plat of the Ready Mix subdivision.
Uh, this is a request for a plat of Lebanon Ready Mix subdivision located at 999 Utah Street. Uh, in planning and zoning, we submitted a plat. There was a request for an amendment to add a waterline easement and vacate a private right-of-way, which at the time, some time ago, there'd been a right-of-way for a street. That's never gonna happen, so we're vacating that right-of-way, and we added the sewer line easement to the amended plat. The plat you see depicted now represents the amendments, and we request your permission.
It's a plat of two lots to one.
Two lots to one.
That's the two to one, sorry. Any questions regarding that, council? Any comments from the public? Okay, move on to the rezoning of 634 Fremont.
You, go ahead.
So, uh, this is a request to, uh, rezone RS1 to RS2 at 634 Fremont, uh, Fremont Road. This is currently zoned RS1. Multi-family is not permitted in RS1. We're requesting that be rezoned to RS2, which would allow for the development of apartment complex at that location. Currently, the two lots are Lebanon acreage. Uh, the request is to replat to a single lot from two lots, Lebanon acreage. It is adjourned by RS3 and RS2 on each side of the property, as you know.
Okay. Council, have any questions regarding that? Okay, any comments from the public? Glenn, you want, would you like to make a comment? Yeah.
Obviously, it, obvious, can you hear me? Sorry.
Yeah.
Obviously, uh, it'll affect me a little bit. I'm just that little guy in the corner.
Hi.
Where is that up there?
So the north, the little north blue box above the one that's outlined, that's his home and residence.
You guys got better eyes than I've got, so anyhow, it's up there somewhere. Oh, I see it now. Right on the edge there, in that, middle of that pink C or D. Looks like a, uh, eye chart.
If you come to speak at council, you get a free eye exam.
Yeah. Gets harder every year we. So anyhow, um, I'm not wanting to stop anything. I'm just trying to, uh, understand. So I went to a meeting about a week ago. We had a meeting, and I just learned a little bit more. And, uh, I think probably it's something that Lebanon needs. It's just that it's gonna affect me a lot, so I'm just trying to be a little proactive with me. So, um, affect me or whoever else moves into that little R1 lot? Cause it's zone, it won't be changed to a R2. Okay. So, uh, that's really why I was here. I, I don't mean to disrupt you guys.
Okay.
You've got plenty of things to cover on your list here, but, uh, so I'm just curious what's, uh, what the next step is, and maybe get a better idea of what we'll go in there, you know, in that rezoning thing. But that might not come up in this meeting. Maybe that'll be in another meeting or something like that, so.
I think as, as, uh, Mark explained, it was gonna be an apartment complex, is that correct, going in there?
Do you know how many, uh, places will be there?
Two hundred and sixteen.
Two hundred and sixteen?
Yes.
Two levels, one level?
Three levels.
Three levels, okay. The last meeting, they thought it was just gonna be one, or at least one of the gentlemen on the zoning committee thought it was just gonna be one level. Well, whatever it is, it'd be a lot of cars on that little road, so I'm sure somebody's gonna have to figure that one out, so.
Yeah.
With Marathon being there, the school being there, and the nursing home, it has its share of visitors too. We don't have any visitors. So anyhow, thank, thank you, guys.
Okay.
I, I learned a little bit, so it's two hundred and sixteen, or three levels.
Okay.
We have the engineer, um, puts project up along, she's booked tonight.
Oh, that'd be good to hear that. I'm, I'm sorry, I.
No, you're fine.
Missed myself.
You're fine, yes, you're, you're fine. Thank you very much, Glenn.
Hey, so my name is Stephanie Roish. I'm with OWN, but I'm representing Bryan Properties, who has that lot. Um, pretty much just gonna kind of reiterate what we just said, but, yeah, so the apartments that are proposed are gonna take up pretty much the front half of that lot. Um, right now, there are seven buildings, like we said, 216 units, um, gonna be three stories high. And then Glenn, just to kind of talk about your property, I know you're right there. We will have a six-foot privacy fence that runs all the way along that property and our property. Um, there's an existing trail that runs through there as well, and the fence will be, so it'll be like the fence, and then the trail will be here, so hopefully that'll take out a lot of foot traffic that you'll see coming onto your property, cause that fence will be kind of blocking where that existing trail is.
So you're talking on the south side of the fence?
Yes, so yeah, along, I guess.
The north, north edge of the property and the south part of his property.
Yes.
Dividing the RS2 that's already existing there.
Correct, yeah. Yes, that's an easier way to say that.
Yeah.
But, uh, is it gonna run that fence all the way down to, uh, Harkey Park, you know?
Yes, so it'll stop, that fence or that trail kind of runs, and then it kind of arcs back up, so it'll run all the way to the very end of where that trail is through. That makes sense. So the trail runs this way.
Just before it gets into Harkey Park.
Yes.
It actually joins, uh, jogging trail or whatever.
Yes.
Up there, so it'll also protect the, the nursing home from a lot of people coming into their lot. I mean, I'm not speaking for them. I was just curious.
I'm not positive, because that, so we're only developing right now that first, the north half of that lot, so the fence is stopping where our development stops. And then they'll, that'll be open land, at least for, you know, the future.
If this is approved, deny, what's, what's the plan for construction time?
You guys help me out on that one?
That's, that's going to be for another meeting.
For another meeting?
Yeah. Maybe bring the final plat.
What's your best estimate?
Next couple of months, probably.
Start?
Yeah.
Okay.
Gotta get final plat approved and construction drawings seen and all that good stuff. We can lock down a timeline too for the next meeting that we're here, cause that's not a great answer, but we should have one at the next meeting for you guys.
So I have a question.
Yes.
If Mr. Stuckmeyer wanted a gate through that fence so that he could access the trail system, which actually goes to Harkey Park, rather than him having to come, otherwise he's gonna have to go a long route around to get to Harkey Park. Is that something that could be done?
Yeah, I think that's something that could be done. Probably need to discuss that for sure, but to get a for sure answer, but I can imagine we could throw a fence in there.
Or a gate.
Or gate, sorry.
You are putting a fence.
Cause you guys are building trails too that connect to Harkey, correct?
Um, is that the trail that runs through there? We have three connection points from our property that'll go over to that trail right there.
Okay, that connects to the wilderness, doesn't it? On the other side of the school?
The, yes.
Yeah, I thought the development was gonna have like a clubhouse and like some basically walking trails within the development itself that would go over, and you said there're gonna be three connection points to that actual.
Yes, so yeah, we'll have sidewalk throughout those buildings and the clubhouse that all connect over there with crosswalks, sidewalks, ramps.
Can you spell your last name? Stephanie Roche, you said, Roche?
Roish, R-E-U-S-C-H.
S-C-H. I wasn't even close. I won't even ever let you see what I had down.
It's German, it's okay.
Will council members be allowed to swim in your pool?
If you got an apartment out there, give it.
Okay. Any other comments, council? Any other comments from the public? All right. I'll now entertain a motion to come out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Wall moved, Mutchler seconded. Roll call, please.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Okay, we're now at a public hearing and on to our first and second readings, Council Bill 6876. Any questions regarding that, council? This is for the replat of lot 21, 22, 23, block 17 of the first railroad addition. First reading then, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving the final plat of replat of lots 21, 22, and 23, block 17, first railroad addition to the City of Lebanon, Lakewood County, Missouri.
Most approved. Second.
Jordan and Evans, roll call, please.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving the final plat of replat of lots 21, 22, and 23, block 17, first railroad addition to the City of Lebanon, Lakewood County, Missouri.
Second, second. Mutchler and Evans on the second, roll call, please.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Okay, Council Bill 68876 becomes ordinance 7118. Council Bill 6877, this is on the final plat of the Eagle Stop. Any questions regarding that, council? Okay, first reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving the final plat of Lebanon Eagle Stop plat number two to the City of Lebanon, Lakewood County, Missouri.
Most approved, second.
Jordan and Mutchler, roll call, please.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving the final plat of Lebanon Eagle Stop plat number two to the City of Lebanon, Lakewood County, Missouri.
Wait one second.
Second, second.
Mutchler and Garner on the second, roll call, please.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Okay, Council Bill 6877 comes ordinance 7118. Council Bill 6878, this is the final plat of Lebanon Ready Mix subdivision. Any questions on that, council? First reading then, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving the final plat of Lebanon Ready Mix subdivision to the City of Lebanon, Lakewood County, Missouri.
Most approved, second.
Evans and Mutchler, roll call, please.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving the final plat of Lebanon Ready Mix subdivision to the City of Lebanon, Lakewood County, Missouri.
Move on, second. Second, second.
Jordan and Mutchler on the second, roll call, please.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Okay, Council Bill 6878 comes ordinance 7120. Thank you, Christina, thank you, Mark. Appreciate it. Uh, Council Bill 6879, Lacy?
Um, state statute allows political subdivisions to create their own conflict of interest ordinance, um, and so what we do is we actually re-adopt this every two years. So, um, this is just re-adopting the ordinance for another two years, and that is for your conflict of interest and personal financial disclosure.
Any questions on that?
Motion approved.
Well, we had to have first reading. First reading then.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving the readoption of the personal financial disclosure ordinance of the city to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal officials.
Motion approved, second.
Mutchler and Evans, roll call, please.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri, approving the readoption of the personal financial disclosure ordinance of the city to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal officials.
Move on, second. Second, second.
Jordan and Evans on the second, roll call, please.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mutchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Okay, Council Bill 6879 comes ordinance 7121. Thank you, Lacy. Council Bill 6880, Jessica?
Mayor and council, this is an agreement with MFA Oil for the annual propane bid. We received three bids this year, MFA Oil, Barrel Gas, and Phoenix Contracting. Um, MFA provided the lowest cost per gallon at a dollar fifty-two per gallon. Barrel Gas was 169, and Phoenix Contracting was 269 per gallon. MFA is also able to fill our propane cylinders if brought to the MFA oil facility based upon the size of the cylinder. The price per gallon has increased from one fifty to one fifty-two per gallon, so a small amount this year. Staff would like to move forward with entering into an agreement with MFA Oil for the annual propane for the next year.
Any questions regarding that, council? First reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving an agreement with MFA Oil to provide propane to various city facilities through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Motion to approve, second.
Evans and Muchler, roll call, please.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving an agreement with MFA Oil to provide propane to various city facilities through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Move on the second.
Atkins and Muchler on the second, roll call, please.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Council Bill sixty-eight eighty becomes ordinance seventy-one twenty-two.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Jessica. Council Bill sixty-eight eighty-one, Rebecca?
Good evening, Mayor and council, we are seeking approval to place an advertisement again this year in the twenty-six Missouri Travel Guide. This is produced by the Missouri Division of Tourism. This is placed in all of their five welcome centers throughout the state of Missouri. It is also an online guide as well as over two hundred thousand printed, uh, to be handed out to whomever will take it. And this is something we do annually. Be happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions, comments, council? First reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving an agreement with Madden Media to provide advertising services for the Tourism Department in the fiscal year twenty twenty-six Missouri Travel Guide.
Most approved, second.
Jordan and Garner, roll call, please.
Evans.
Yes.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving an agreement with Madden Media to provide advertising services for the Tourism Department in the fiscal year twenty twenty-six Missouri Travel Guide.
So moved on the second. Second.
Evans and Atkins on the second, roll call, please.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Hey, Council Bill sixty-eight eighty-one comes ordinance seventy-one twenty-three. Council Bill sixty-eight eighty-two.
Thank you so much. Uh, this is, uh, our request to enter a contract with Osborne Par Paramore or OBP. This is for a program through the Missouri Division of Tourism for our search engine marketing. It is an annual program for our fiscal year. And we will spend forty-two hundred dollars and the Missouri Division of Tourism will match that, so we'll actually have an eighty-four hundred dollar program for search engine marketing and only pay half. And this is something we participate in every year. It is also a program that if you should choose to not be in it, the likelihood you will get back in it is not there at all. So, we definitely stay in it if approved.
Any questions, comments, council? Okay, first reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving an agreement with Osborne Bar Paramore to provide search engine marketing services for the Tourism Department.
Motion to approve, second.
Garner and Evans, roll call, please.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans. Muchler.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving an agreement with Osborne Bar Paramore to provide search engine marketing services for the Tourism Department.
Move on the second.
Second, second. Evans and Muchler on the second, roll call, please.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans. Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Hey, Council Bill sixty-eight eighty-two becomes ordinance seventy-one twenty-four. Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you so much.
Council Bill sixty-eight eighty-three, Mike?
Mayor and council requesting approval for the purchase of street and stormwater materials for improvements in legacy trails subdivision phase two. Thirteen hundred and twenty-five feet of new street, storm drain sidewalk, and the total cost is a hundred and fifty-eight thousand, a hundred and fifty dollars. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions regard, on that, council? Okay, first reading, please, first reading.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving the purchase of various street and stormwater materials for legacy trail subdivision phase two and authorizing the execution of all necessary documents to complete the project.
Second.
Garner and Evans, roll call, please.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans. Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving the purchase of various street and stormwater materials for legacy trail subdivision phase two and authorizing the execution of all necessary documents to complete the project.
Move on, second.
Second, second. Jordan and Muchler on the second, roll call, please.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Hey, Council Bill sixty-eight eighty-three becomes ordinance seventy-one twenty-five.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Council Bill sixty-eight eighty-four, Sean?
Good evening, Mayor and council. This would be for the construction of the urban, uh, park restrooms. Quotes for all the materials in construction of a new ten-by-twenty finished restroom located at the urban downtown park. Due to the, the nature of this project and all the entities that are involved with this project, um, we, we received quotes from the bidders below, which was true construction, uh, build tech, and night construction. Um, staff recommends entering a contact, a contract with night construction for eighty-eight thousand, four hundred, and a total project cost of a hundred thousand. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
What's the difference between the two?
Eighty-eight thousand, four hundred, that.
So, um, with, with everybody that's involved with this project, uh, we're anticipating some change and, uh, that's where we're trying to cover that change.
I understand, that's good.
Downtown tax. Think we'd soon be shot, but we're gonna do it.
Sure that's, sure that's enough.
Think so. But no, they're, uh, but that, that's, I mean, they're, we're anticipating, um, I mean, we have the architectural drawings from it and, uh, I mean, we have a very good basis that we're working off of, but we are anticipating, uh, as we get closer that there's some want-tos added to that, so, um, that's why.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Okay, first reading then, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving an agreement with night construction for the construction of the downtown restroom.
Most approved, second.
Jordan and Garner, roll call, please.
Evans.
Yes.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving an agreement with night construction for the construction of the downtown restroom.
Move on, second.
Second, second. Garner and Evans on the second, roll call, please.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Hey, Council Bill sixty-eight eighty-four comes ordinance seventy-one twenty-six. Council Bill sixty-eight eighty-five.
This would be for the purchase and installation of the ornamental fencing for the downtown urban park. Project includes a new perimeter fence and gates for the downtown park. Uh, we, we only received one bid back on this project, so staff recommends entering a contract with Leo Morgan for the amount of ten thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars. Be happy to answer any questions you got there.
Any questions, council? First reading then, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving an agreement with Leo Morgan fencing for the purchase and installation of a fence for the downtown urban park.
Most approved, second.
Jordan and Muchler, roll call, please.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans. Muchler.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving an agreement with Leo Morgan fencing for the purchase and installation of a fence for the downtown urban park.
Go on, second.
Second, second.
Muchler and Evans on the second, roll call, please.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Council Bill sixty-eight eighty-five comes ordinance seventy-one twenty-seven.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean, appreciate it. Council Bill sixty-eight eighty-six, oh, and by, by the way, good luck with that variation. Just saying. Table it. Sixty-eight eighty-six, Jared.
Yes, sir, uh, I've got three, uh, regarding the airport apron and taxiway project, so the first three are, uh, um, all within our CIP and in our master plan for repairs and markings and so forth at the, uh, airport. All the aprons run in East and West and as well as some of the taxiways. And, uh, the first one is an amendment for an additional twenty-two, nine thirty-eight. Second one's, uh, supplement, and the third one's markings and repairs. Fire away at will.
Any questions on that, he's talking about sixty-eight eighty-six, eighty-seven, and eighty-eight? I meant to, I meant to do that when I looked, this is like, I'm just gonna do them all at once, I was.
They're all relates, all the same project that we've brought forth before.
Any questions regarding any of those, council? All right. Lacy, need a drink of water before you?
I'm good, let's go.
All right, first reading then, please, sixty-eight eighty-six.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving an amendment to the original agreement for the state block grant with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the rehabilitation of taxiway and apron project.
Motion to approve, second.
Wall and Muchler, roll call, please.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving an amendment to the original agreement for the state block grant with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the rehabilitation of taxiway and apron project.
Move on, second.
Second, second. Jordan and Evans on the second, roll call, please.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Okay, Council Bill sixty-eight eighty-six becomes ordinance seventy-one twenty-eight. First reading of the Council Bill sixty-eight eighty-seven.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving supplemental agreement number one with Crawford Murphy Tilly, Inc. for the airport taxiway and apron rehabilitation project at the Floyd W. Jones Regional Airport.
Motion approved, second.
Muchler and Evans, roll call, please.
Evans.
Yes.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving supplemental agreement number one with Crawford Murphy Tilly Incorporated for the airport taxiway and apron rehabilitation project at the Floyd W. Jones Regional Airport.
Move on the second.
Second, second. Evans and Muchler on the second, roll call, please.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Hey, Council Bill sixty-eight eighty-seven comes ordinance seventy-one twenty-nine. First reading of Council Bill sixty-eight eighty-eight.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving an aviation consultant agreement with Crawford Murphy Tilly Incorporated for the T-Hanger taxi lane reconstruction at the Floyd W. Jones Regional Airport.
Most approved, second.
Jordan and Wall, roll call, please.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Muchler.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving an aviation consultant agreement with Crawford Murphy Tilly Incorporated for the T-Hanger taxi lane reconstruction at the Floyd W. Jones Regional Airport.
Move on, second. Second, second.
Muchler and Evans on the second, roll call, please.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Hey, Council Bill sixty-eight eighty-eight becomes ordinance seventy-one thirty.
Thank you, Lacy.
Awesome, great job. Uh, Council Bill sixty-eight eighty-nine, yes.
My final one is a lease agreement with L-three Harris, uh, for the east tower, and that allows, uh, modi aviation and, uh, F, FAA to monitor beacons and see traffic around our area. Basically a renewal. And there will be? Any other questions before I? Let's go back here.
I hear he needs a bathroom construct.
He's just stalling for her to catch her breath or Lacy. There will be an amendment, they do not want it to take effect until October one, so. Any questions?
The contract that you see attached that did not have the October first date in it, the warranty makes it that they knew that October first date shouldn't have to pass, right?
Put their monitoring until then as well?
Yes, yes.
The current contract.
We will stretch it.
All right. Uh, first reading then, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving a lease agreement with L-three Harris Technologies Incorporated for a communications tower at the Floyd W. Jones Regional Airport.
Most approved, second.
Jordan and Garner. And then we need a motion to amended, correct?
Yeah, we can, uh, do a motion to amend the agreement to reflect the October first, twenty twenty-five date.
Motion to amend.
Muchler motioned.
Second.
Wall seconded, roll call on the motion? To, or the amendment, sorry?
Garner.
Yeah.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Sorry.
Not here.
Not here. Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Here, yes.
All right, so the amendment, amendment passes and now the, uh, vote on the, roll call vote on the first reading of the amended, uh, ordinance.
October first.
October first, yes. Roll call.
We good, I know, are we good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall. Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
All right, and the second reading of Council Bill, the amended Council Bill 6889.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving a lease agreement with L-3 Harris Technologies Incorporated for a communications tower at the Floyd W. Jones Regional Airport.
Move on to second.
Wall and Garner, roll call, please, on the second.
Evans.
Yes.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
All right, Council Bill 6889 comes ordinance 7131.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jared, appreciate it. Council Bill 6890, Troy.
Mayor and council, this is an ordinance that authorizes the purchase of up to thirty-eight flower pot holders to be installed on light poles in downtown Lebanon. Under the agreement, the city is interested in making sure that we buy the material that is attached to our light poles, and it'll be the responsibility of the downtown business district to put the flower, whatever they want to pick for flower pots, that will go in the flower pot holders. So, these are attached, these are specifically designed by Stress Creek to specifically attach to our poles. We had ten thousand budgeted in the, in the budget for this initiative. It came in eleven thousand, two hundred and forty-eight, because we had, we'd assumed the purchase of thirty-six downtown, and I agree, it's probably not to have a bad idea to have a little bit of a contingency in case they, some storm damage or they're broken off for vandalism, we can put them back up fairly quickly. So, this would authorize a eleven thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollar for new flower pot holders in downtown Lebanon. Sarah is here, if you want to ask any specific questions on kind of the arrangement. Again, we buy the infrastructure, they do the decorating.
Will these be artificial flowers that are put in these pots?
They're still deciding that. Part of the issue is watering, we don't have a good strategy for doing that. So, they've been artificial previously, but those hanging baskets kind of swung too much and things fell out of them, so this will make them much more beautiful, even if they are artificial.
Big fan of artificial.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? First reading then, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving the purchase of hanging flower pot holders for the downtown business district from Stress Creek Incorporated.
Motion approved.
Second. Jordan and Garner, roll call, please.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving the purchase of hanging flower pot holders for the downtown business district from Stress Creek, Stress Creek Incorporated.
Move on to second. Second, second.
Muchler and Evans. We're doing so good. The second, roll call, please.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Muchler.
Yes.
And Council Bill 6890 becomes ordinance 7132. Council Bill 6891, Travis?
Mayor and council, this is for the labor contract for the upgrading of the wood poles to engineered galvanized steel poles across I-44, and then upgrading a wood pole to a steel structure at Mother's Garden. The existing transmission and distribution poles at the I-44 crossing are from 1968 and need to be upgraded. The distribution poles at Mother, or the distribution pole at Mother's Garden is a nineteen eighty-eight pole. That pole is in between two feeders, as I've previously stated, and it is a major pole for contingency or backfeed for a lot of our industrial customers on that side of town. Due to the size of the new self-supporting structures and the installation process, we are asking to hire a contractor to complete this portion of the project. Staff received eight bids with BBC Electric being the lowest bid, and after a review by our staff and in alignment with the professional recommendation from Toth, we propose utilizing BBC Electric for the labor component of this project with a total contract amount of six hundred and ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars and forty-seven cents. That is combined with labor and the owner furnished materials. The labor portion of this is only three seventy-eight, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars and ten cents. Budgeted amount was two hundred thousand, and the, for, due to the overage, the one seventy-eight, five sixty-four will be the overage, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-four. I'm utilizing funds available through our MOPAP Power Infrastructure Modernization Grant Program. I have already sent the paperwork into them, and we will be using that for the overage on this project. Any questions?
I think we ought to use that program more often. That sounds pretty good to me.
I'd say we will.
Yeah, that looks pretty good.
So, really, we don't have, we don't feel confident with somebody on staff to do that engineering?
We, the engineering, yeah, the engineering's complete, yeah, we don't...
So, it's just the...
It's just the labor portion of this, the drilling of the case, or setting of the caissons, drilling of the holes, all the concrete, and then the steel structures are way past our limits on our trucks. We, we can't lift that stuff.
Okay.
Where do we get poles that were nineteen sixty-eight poles? How do we get those today? That's, that's a big question.
They've been good for us.
Any other questions, council? All right, first reading then, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving a contract with BBC Electrical Services for pole changeouts related to the I-24 and Mother's Garden electric project.
Motion approved.
Second. Jordan and Muchler, I believe that was Jordan.
Yes.
Yep.
Roll call, please.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Okay, second reading, please.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri approving a contract with BBC Electrical Services for pole changeouts related to the I-44 and Mother's Garden electric project.
Move on to second.
Second, second. Evans and Wall on the second, roll call, please.
Garner.
Yes.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
And Council Bill 6891 becomes ordinance 7133. Thanks, Travis, appreciate it. First reading tonight of Council Bill 6892. Any questions on that, council? This is the rezoning of two lots located at 634 Fremont from RS1 to RS2. All right, then, first reading then.
An ordinance by the City Council of Lebanon, Missouri amending the city of Lebanon, Missouri's zoning district map by approving the rezoning of two lots located at 634 Fremont Road from RS1 residential to RS2 residential.
Motion to approve.
Second. Evans and Muchler, roll call, please.
Atkins.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Muchler.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Garner.
Yes.
Hey, council, okay, Council Bill 6891 passes first read and be placed on the docket August 11th for second reading. Thank you all, again. Okay, that's all for ordinances tonight, we'll go with comments, any comments from the staff and the audience? Nothing? Okay. Chief, have anything?
Mayor, just wanted to share with the council that the Blue Shield Resolution that council passed recently resulted in us getting a fifty thousand dollar grant from the Department of Public Safety.
Great.
Great.
Know what we're gonna do with it yet?
No, it'll have to be at fifty, we won't be able to...
You won't be able to throw it up and have an overage or anything like that? Okay. You got him covered. All right, chief.
As everybody probably saw in the paper or in social media, our new inspector, Mike Spencer, Spence started last week. He's been in several of the businesses downtown, and he reports he's getting actually a very warm reception. And Inspector is doing more than well, so...
Great.
Happy to have that program back up and running.
Excellent. Richard? Lacy? Counselor? He's on his phone. Counselor?
No.
Anything? Troy?
Quickly, I'll just kind of go through and I want to recognize some folks. Last week, we had a, I think, I think the mayor would attest, a pretty successful economic development visit by some company out of England that was looking at Lebanon. We don't know the outcome of it, but we certainly, I think, put our best foot forward. Want to thank Brian Thompson, who kind of put together the presentation, worked, kind of was the liaison between the company and the Missouri partnership. The mayor did a great job, as always. Ashley Sicard and Nancy handled the food and all of the, for the luncheon, that was successful, and I want to shout out to Linda and everybody from Leclite Industries who went through and kind of spruced up ice cream way before, before the visit.